I called the, uh, I called to order the June 24th, 2019 regular business meeting of the city council. Mr. Allen, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had the opportunity to look over the agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to present the agenda?
I'll make a motion if we pass the...
Mr. Allen made the motion to present. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four-oh. Next item up on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Item four.
Item number four.
Well, no, they, he, we did this and now we're onto the consent.
So moved.
Oh, oh, we're doing the consent agenda for number three, huh? Okay.
I thought that's where we was the first time.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four-oh. Hey, for those that, uh, well, matters for council, does anyone have anything they want to present?
Uh, I do, I have to double check the timing, if anybody else has anything. Hearing none. Uh, my next, uh, meeting with constituents, which is regularly scheduled the first Tuesday, uh, of the month, uh, will be moved from nine o'clock to two o'clock in the afternoon. Um, I've got a conflict at nine o'clock that morning, uh, so that'll be July the second, uh, two o'clock at the, uh, French Press Coffee Shop across the street here.
Thank you. Anything else? I'd just like to thank Mike Hamp, he had a busy day today, he had to go to Northern Virginia or Washington DC to do a presentation today and rushed back just for this meeting, so thank you, Mike, very much.
Thank you.
Uh, item number five is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, 1734 B Street. Item five is to hold a public hearing to receive comment and consider introducing an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to install a manufactured home at 1735, 1734 B Street, tax map eighteen, eighty-four dash one, dash one-eight-seven, dash six through eight, upon application by Ms. Nancy Johnson, the owner. Mr. Judea? Judea.
Them lights up there, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. The application tonight for a conditional use permit is for a manufactured home in the RG5 General Residential District. Uh, the applicant, uh, Ms. Nancy Johnson is here tonight, she is the owner and occupant of a home at 1734 B Street here on the east side. The property at which she lived was unfortunately burned in a house fire last year, some of you all may remember that, um, and so Ms. Johnson would like to replace the structure with a manufactured home, it's not a mobile home like a trailer, but it's a, uh, prefabricated home, um, that'll be constructed on the site. This requires a conditional use permit in all districts, and so that's what the request is today. The property is in the floodplain, but the applicant has provided us with a stamped elevation certificate from a professional engineer stating that the construction site is out of the floodplain, so it will not be subject to floodplain regulations. Here's the current property, you can see in the back here is, uh, what's going to become a shed, it was, um, part of, the part of the structure that did not burn. Um, it's in a, essentially a dead-end street section of B Street that's, that's a little bit further back, um, it's surrounded by some single-family homes and a number of other manufactured and mobile homes. The one condition that was recommended by Planning Commission, uh, was that the applicant be required to position the home parallel to the street, or orient the home parallel to the street, which she was already planning to do, rather than perpendicular, and that's just a condition that we've put on all manufactured home CUPs over the last few years, um, it kinda helps to maintain the feeling of the neighborhood as you drive through it. Um, here's two manufactured homes, both of which are, two mobile homes, both of which are fairly well-kept, uh, but you just see that it's a slightly different, uh, sense when you have the front door facing onto the street, create, makes it feel a bit, a little bit, uh, more consistent as you drive down the street. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission, Commission agreed, agreed that a manufactured home in this location would have no more significant impacts than any other use generally permitted in the district, um, as I said, the area has quite a few manufactured homes already surrounding it, um, the home that the, uh, applicant has, uh, suggested and provided us with a site planned for is quite nice, it'll look excellent in the location, um, and Planning Commission recommends approval on a four-oh vote, um, with the following condition, that the widest facade of the proposed manufactured home shall be positioned parallel to the street. Any questions?
No question.
I hereby open up the floor for public hearing, does anyone sign up to come forward?
So it is our, um, tradition that the applicant be afforded an opportunity to speak, oftentimes, um, the Director of Planning has that covered, but, um, if you would like to speak, okay, uh, and no one has signed up otherwise.
I hereby close the public meeting. Can I get a motion to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Hostetter, can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, is there any discussion? The ordinance has been introduced, and the second will be considered on July 8th at our regular business meeting. Item number six is for a public hearing concerning the Community Development Block Grant. Item number six is to hold a public hearing to receive comments on housing and community development needs and input on the development needs in the city for specific CDG, CDBG eligible activities. Luke? Or Mr. Judea, I'm sorry.
Hi, there works. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, mayors and members of council. The, actually, this should say fiscal year 19th plan, and that should say 2019, sorry about that, obviously, we reuse the, the presentation and edit it a little bit every year. Um, the CDBG program is a program by the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government, it's called, it stands for Community Development Block Grant, and it was begun, um, several decades ago. Uh, it provides annual grants on a formula basis, now, there's two different tracts that you can be in with CDBG, one of those tracts is a competitive tract, and so you are applying for grants, you're putting together a big application, you have to have a big project, they're fairly substantial grants, four, $500,000 or more than that even, um, and they're for a very discreet project, so the city of Waynesboro, uh, got two of those competitive grants back in the nineties and two thousands, which were used, uh, on downtown revitalization, especially the streetscape work, um, some facade grants, things like that, for downtown planning. Since then, we've been rolled into the other tract, which is the entitlement tract, and that's for communities that have a certain threshold of a, uh, poverty level above a certain threshold, um, they'll give you an allocation, just an annual allocation that's set, that's based on that poverty threshold, so whereas we could probably get a competitive grant, we could be in the mix for a grant of maybe five or $600,000, every few years, we might be competitive for one, with the entitlement program, we get about $180,000 every year consistently without having to apply for it. The goal of the CDBG program is to develop viable communities, we wanna try to develop and maintain, uh, viability i- in neighborhoods that are older, they're reaching their second life cycle, their third life cycle, um, that's the point where folks are gonna either reinvest or not reinvest, and the goal of the CDBG program is to get them to reinvest, to get them to commit to those neighborhoods and make those places, um, you know, integral parts of the city in the future. Some goals include providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities principally for low and moderate income persons, and the abbreviation that you'll see here is LMI, that stands for Low to Moderate Income, and normally refers to census tracts, um, that have a, below the average median income. CDBG allows communities to take on projects that would often be done with private investment in a newer, wealthier area, and I think that's an important distinction there, that, uh, you're often dealing with areas as they're older neighborhoods that have a weaker economic engine, or they're experiencing less new construction, so you have fewer opportunities, like we would have in a newer area, you know, in an area that's currently suburbanizing or that has, um, shopping centers going up, there's fewer opportunities for us to negotiate and cost share with developers, um, there's just not a lot of the change or activity happening, and so CDBG gives you an opportunity to do those projects that the city would generally not be involved in. Uh, and I think that this ties in well with our comprehensive plan, the city has a strong interest in getting property owners to reinvest and ensuring that, um, all of its citizens live in neighborhoods that are, um, that are, you know, up to a certain standard, that are excellent places to, to live and to grow up. CDBG's national objectives include first, benefiting low and moderate income persons, secondly, aiding in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, that's actually a technical term in HUD, and that, and that refers to areas where there's a lot of vacancies, especially commercial areas, and then meeting needs that have a particular urgency, especially in communities that may, might not have the resources because as, uh, in general, their property, uh, values are, are lower than other communities around them. The areas where you can expend, uh, funds are based on census geographies, so, uh, in the dark here is the, uh, is the census block groups, uh, that have that LMI status, that they're, um, the median income is below that threshold, so where we could legally spend it. Now, you might notice that those don't necessarily line up with actual city neighborhoods, and in fact, some of our census block groups are drawn in very odd ways, like there's one that runs all the way down here to Target, um, and as you know, you know, that's not a very high poverty area right around the Target or anything, there's really just not a lot of housing, but because of how that's grouped in, now, we, there's a little bit of, of room for rational, you know, pushback with that, uh, you can take steps to prove to HUD that an area should be included, for instance, this part of, uh, Basic City in the west side here has actually very low income, uh, median income, but it's in the same census block group as this area that goes up to Hopeman Parkway, and so that drags it above that threshold. Um, similarly, you have areas of Anna Marie and Claybrook and, and those areas that are eligible, in an eligible census tract, but as you know, they're not below that threshold, um, but they're getting pulled down by other parts of that census block group, so, like I said, there, there is a certain amount of, of rational oversight that goes into this from HUD, um, if we spent the money in Claybrook, we'd get a call, you know, there, there's gonna be a certain amount of, of oversight of that. Which brings me to another point about CDBG, which is that there's a great deal of oversight, and it is, um, very onerous to administer, so that's something to keep in mind when we choose projects. CDBG funds can be used for a variety of purposes, one is the construction of public facilities and improvements, such as water and sewer facilities, streets, neighborhood centers, and the conversion of school buildings for eligible purposes, like community centers. Uh, it can be used for some public services within certain limits, though HUD is pushing people away from that. It can be used for activities relating to energy conservation and renewable energy resources. It can be used for relocation and demolition of structures, um, we have used it for this in the past, it is, again, a very expensive process to administer because, uh, especially if it's in a historic district, so we've tried to stay away from that, we did demolish a house, um, on Fairview Avenue last year using CDBG money, um, and that required about a year-long process of sending letters to Native American tribes and, um, getting certifications from architects in Richmond and all kinds of stuff like that, and so that tends to be a less efficient use of the money than, we try to stay away from that, but that is a possible, um, item, you can use it for rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures. Again, this is a use, um, we largely operate the CDBG program through the, uh, the Housing and Redevelopment Association, um, and so they have undertaken several large rehab projects of residences, uh, this is asterisk because this is another thing that they're pushing us away from, they're saying that we're just not getting, uh, the return on that, you know, it's not a very large sum of money in the scope of what you are working with in, in construction, um, and so you can quickly blow half or most of it on one house in a year, um, and then you haven't made a really significant impact across the block or the neighborhood, and so, um, it's often not considered the best use of it, and HUD is starting to push localities away from it as well, though, we're hoping that we can partner in the future with organizations that have more expertise in that and that know how to work with the homeowners and, and keep, keep up with them afterwards, like Habitat for Humanity or, um, the Housing Authority. And then provision of assistance to profit motivated businesses to carry out economic development and job creation retention activities, it's kind of a general statement, the actual, um, activities are, are very tightly defined there. CDBG funds may not be used for operations and maintenance, it can't be used to offset your city's ma- typical maintenance budget. It cannot be used for projects located in or primarily benefiting higher income areas, and I think that's, uh, an important point, they'll flag things that are, they're, they're saying, well, this is really a benefit to the city as a whole, not to, not to the neighborhood. Uh, may not be used for, uh, government buildings, purchase of equipment, or new housing construction, those are all things that are not on the table. Every five years, we have to submit a consolidated plan to HUD in order to continue receiving our entitlement grant, now, the end of our five-year plan was this past year, um, and so I'm reusing some stuff from that previous plan, um, as we have not submitted our, our new one yet. It's to provide decent housing by preserving the affordable housing stock, increasing the ability, availability of affordable housing, reducing discriminatory barriers, increasing the supply of supportive housing for those with special needs, and transitioning homeless families into housing. Secondly, to provide a suitable living environment through safer, more livable neighborhoods, greater integration of low and moderate income residents throughout the city, increased housing opportunities and reinvestment in deteriorating neighborhoods. And thirdly, to expand economic opportunities through more jobs paying self-sufficient wages, homeownership opportunities, development activities that promote long-term community viability, and the empowerment of low and moderate income persons to achieve self-sufficiency. Just to recap what's going on this year, so again, we're at the beginning of our five-year program, the total fiscal year 2019 grant is $182,768. Uh, so it's enough money to do some small projects, again, it's not, uh, not enough to do the, the scale of large, um, projects that are generally considered in things like the cop plant. It's administered by the Waynesboro Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Tom Carlson over there has years of experience administering this, um, we don't currently have anyone on city staff that's really qualified or experienced enough to, to handle it, though, uh, Mr. Carlson is approaching retirement, so we're starting to consider that, um, but a maximum of 20% can go towards personnel and administrative costs, as I said, it's very labor-intensive to administer, um, HUD supervises it closely, all projects have to meet things like Davis-Bacon Wage, uh, rules, Buy America, ADA, all those, um, federal regulations. Um, of the non-administrative expenditures, a max of 30%, so about $44,000 for us, can go towards projects in commercial areas that are designated slums and blight. Basically, you can designate one area of your locality as your slums and blight area that's largely a commercial area, and use up to 30% of your funds there, the other 70% have to be used in those LMI neighborhoods. Now, for the past cycle, uh, we've designated downtown as our slums and blight area, we actually might be at the point where the vacancy rate is low enough that, I'm not even sure that it will qualify anymore, in order to designate something slums and blight, you need to have an architect come and do a survey and verify that a certain percentage of your properties are either, um, dilapidated or, or vacant, um, so that's something to consider for the upcoming year. Some things that we've done with CDBG projects in the past, we've done a few infrastructure projects downtown, those have included the Arch Avenue sidewalks and some facade grants for downtown businesses, most of the money, or the 70% of the money spent in LMI areas have gone largely to rehab programs for homeowners through the, um, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, um, as well as to infrastructure improvements, um, we did a bunch of water pressure fixes in Basic City, a bunch of water pressure fixes in Port Republic, uh, fixed the sewer system up there, and so, but largely utility stuff that has been underground. Again, those are pieces of infrastructure that would not generally change until there was a new redevelopment, but you're working in areas where there's not a lot of construction activity happening, and so you don't have, um, generally, we would just maintain whatever exists there, um, but in a lot of these areas, especially towards upper Basic City, we have big water pressure problems that affect residents, um, and that's, uh, also, you know, impede development, and so, this is an opportunity to, uh, to try to address those problems in a way that the city generally would not. We're required to file a citizen participation plan with HUD that provides citizens with access to local meetings, information and records, um, and have public hearings at all stages of the community development program, as well as timely written answers to written complaints and grievances. In the past, as I said, we've largely stuck to housing rehabilitation across the city, uh, and this is getting into, um, our upcoming five-year plan update, um, and done sort of miscellaneous infrastructure problems where there were, uh, water pressure problems or sewer access problems that were hurting, um, redevelopment opportunities in lower-income neighborhoods. Recently, we've started to have more discussions about whether that, we could shift our focus with CDBG, and, and several of you have been a part of that, um, and so I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit. Again, we're at the end of our five-year entitlement, so we have to submit a new five-year plan. This is our opportunity to bail and go into the, that competitive pool again, if that is of interest to the council, um, staff has not recommended that, simply because, uh, we would be doing a lot more grant preparation, uh, work, and we would need to have a specific large project, uh, and we'd be at risk, you know, we would need to, uh, uh, we might get a grant every four or five years, it's gonna work out to be a wash in terms of the amount of money, probably, um, and again, there's that risk element, we got several large grants, um, in the two thousands, um, that, you know, they might look at us and say, well, you know, you don't necessarily need to get another one, whereas with this, uh, we have a very consistent program, we know how much we're getting every year, um, Tom Carlson's gotten good at administering it, um, and it's, it's that guaranteed allotment, so, most localities that are qualified for the entitlement program stay in the entitlement program, Stanton, I believe, recently entered it. Um, we do have to designate at some point a new slums and blight area, we might be able to recertify downtown as our commercial area, um, but we could also consider a different spot, uh, again, it would require an architect to study and certify that a significant percentage of the properties are vacant or dilapidated currently, um, I'm sure we could get Commerce Avenue to qualify, uh, we probably could not get East Main, um, but, uh, yeah, we could potentially stick with, uh, stick with downtown, um, or we could dedicate more of the money towards neighborhood projects, would also be acceptable. As far as the future of the program, the discussions we've had, as I said, in the past, we've largely just focused on rehab, helping folks that weren't able to keep up their houses in some of these neighborhoods, um, especially, we helped a lot of elderly residents who had zoning violations, but who were homeowners and weren't able to address those or were physically incapable of it, um, and we hope to continue to do a little bit of that, as well as some of that infrastructure work, um, but there's been talk of trying to, um, trying to make a more targeted impact, again, when, a lot of times when you're doing those housing rehab projects, you can spend half your allotment for the year on one house, you haven't made a very visible difference in the neighborhood. Um, and since in, at the Planning Commission, we've been discussing doing neighborhood plans, um, and trying to more directly address neighborhood concerns around the city, we've talked about potentially tying this in with that, um, this could be, uh, one outlet for, you know, um, a way to address recommendations that come out of those neighborhood plans. We recently had a meeting with the Port Republic neighborhood, um, and we had a number of projects that last year the council had discussed doing in Port Republic, um, and, uh, one thing that came out of that, uh, meeting, in addition to feedback on the specific projects, uh, was the desire to contract with a consultant and do, and do a full neighborhood planning process, and so, we're gonna do that this year, um, and we'll hopefully use that as a, um, as a case from, from which to learn in the future of, uh, how to go about this, again, we're very new to this whole, this whole idea, we haven't, we really had a neighborhood planning program in Waynesboro before, and so, we'll see how that plan goes, um, and then, uh, we've also had a meeting in, uh, the lower Basic City area, discussing improvements over there, um, maybe we can try a different model there, um, see what works best, um, and continue with that, rolling that program, um, and alternating between neighborhoods as we go forward. We do need to discuss what that looks like, how do we select neighborhoods to target every year, um, what scale are we calling a neighborhood? We, as I said, uh, are gonna try to address a number of things in Port Republic this year, um, we're also gonna look to Basic City next year, but it's a question of how you, uh, how you split those things up, I mean, in Port Republic, we're looking at about 300 people living in that neighborhood, we'll probably do a neighborhood plan that spans all the way over to Florence Avenue, and that'll be more like six or 800 people. Um, Basic City, Basic City is 5,000 people, you know, you can't do a plan for that larger, or you could, but, and that's a very large area, so do we break that up into sub-areas and do a plan for East Main Street and for Lower Basic City, Upper Basic City, Shenandoah Heights, um, so we need to discuss how that, uh, that's done. Um, and then, what is our approach in the future, do we continue with the, um, the project of bringing on consultants, doing a, a full neighborhood steering committee and input process, um, as we'll be trying in Port Republic, um, or is there another process that will work better and get us, um, more actionable stuff? So that's, uh, uh, that's where we're, where we're headed with it. Um, tonight is a, not, we don't have any projects for you, this is a public hearing, um, to get general feedback on the CDBG program in the city, um, as well as on the next year of projects. We've loosely committed to doing projects in Basic City, um, this next year as part of this program to try to continue our, our experiment, um, but we can, uh, uh, you know, we're open to, to feedback on possible shifts and, and, and ideas of, of how we could structure it differently. That's all that I have, questions for me, or?
I don't have any question.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm getting right open the floor for public hearing, uh, if you choose to come up to the podium to speak, we got a little stoplight here, it'll start green, you'll have three minutes to, to present your presentation, and then when it turns red, kinda wrap it up and go back to your seats. With that said, I hereby open the public hearing.
Okay, the first individual signed to speak is Ms. Karen Orlando.
Hi, I'm Karen Orlando, I live in 428 Maple, thank you so much for having me. Um, so I'm here to talk a little bit about the Children's Museum that I've already spoken to you about a little bit already, um, and regards to this grant and us working hard to revitalize a neighborhood, a section of town, and helping bring new business, helping the, the residents of that area make, improving the quality of life in that area, um, and throughout the city, really. Um, so we've started this project with no funding in place whatsoever, and we're excited that we are now in a position to begin renovations on 201 Short Street, so we'll be starting that, we're going through all the process of getting that going. Um, so the location is across from the future South River Preserve Project, and the site was specifically chosen to help revitalize that section of town, um, in tandem with that South River Project, uh, and helping get more businesses in the downtown area. So we've been, uh, doing business, serving children, in the hopes that our programs, and we hope that our programs have already been serving the community well, we've had hundreds of hours of unpaid volunteer time and, um, expanded through a network of volunteers to help bring this vision to, to fruition. Um, right now, we're actually in the middle of doing a summer program for at-risk youth in partnership with the Y in the public schools, um, and that served many of the children that live in these communities that we're talking about right now. Um, so what we need now are walls to, for these children to be able to come to. Um, so because of the dollars saved from those volunteer hours in lieu of paid positions in area businesses who have been incredibly generous with their time and talent, giving us their services at reduced rates or in kind, we've been, and also funding from grants, we, we're in a position now where we can start our renovations on that 201 Short Street building, and we're also working with an incredibly cooperative and generous building owner who is helping us with this project as well. So we see this community block grant as a way that the city can begin to help demonstrate the same level of support that the community has shown us already, um, by helping providing us with, uh, building renovations and grants improvements at that location, that is so important to the downtown and that neighborhood. By doing this, we'd be able to divert dollars and be able to provide the necessary staffing to run the museum once we get it all built up, um, we could develop beneficial programming for our community, including bringing programming into the schools and into the neighborhoods, um, and it'd also help us provide memberships to students, uh, or to members at little or no cost, which is... to students, or to members at little or no cost, which is incredibly important to our mission, and incredibly important to the submission of this grant as well. So we've heard repeatedly from area residents, business owners, and many people in this room today about how beneficial this Children's Museum would be to our community and to the revitalization of our downtown. It would play a huge part in improving the quality of life in our community. We would welcome further conversation with each and every one of you, and we hope that the museum can be included in some way with this grant in either short and/or long term. So, thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jeanne McCutcheon, and I'm with the Port Republic Road Historical, excuse me, Community Association, and I'm representing them, so I'm talking from 267 Port Republic Road, okay, instead of my residence. The reason why I'm here, a while back, as you've probably heard me say many times before, that on the Port Republic Road area, we seem to be ignored when it comes to sidewalks, and I'm strictly sticking with the sidewalks now. So today, when I was reading the paper, and it mentioned Mr. Shore saying, "As an example, a group like Habitat and Humanity might have a project in mind that city would partner on by addressing specific infrastructure such as adding sidewalks or streetlights." We had sidewalks, not adding, and we know in this community, when Gorkley was the city manager, he came here in 1985, he left here in 1995, and during that time, there was a problem with the pressure on the Port Republic Road. And they did come and fix that, and it said that we would get new sidewalks. Now, I gave you the dates, it's beyond 25 years. I think you should consider something. I had a funeral service at Pleasant View United Methodist Church and got out the car and slipped and fell because the sidewalk was in damage. And I called Mr. Keys, he came and he said, "We will fix it, but we only can do temporary work here and there. We do not have any funding to put the sidewalk." My point is, I see sidewalks going up places where there were never a sidewalk, including a wall. It's been 25 years. Now, we have a Greenway that's coming through there. We want that place, the historic district, to be a place that people would want to walk. There's about 80-some sites in that particular area that are historic, and this group is working hard to try to identify them, to make that a historic site that will help improve our tourism also, to be included. I am surprised that there are many who sitting in this room may not even realize that Port Republic Road is a historic district. We have three: downtown, Tree Streets, and the Port Republic Road. We're asking you to consider that, that the sidewalks will be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No one else has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. Item number seven is ordinance second consideration for a fiscal year 2019 budget amendment. Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So you guys introduced this ordinance at your last meeting, it was advertised on June the 3rd. This would be for second consideration and adoption. The main point of this is to consolidate reserves and appropriate funds into the bond fund and the debt fund, and also to create, I'm sorry, to the CIP fund and the debt fund, and to create a bond fund to appropriately track the bonds that were issued for the school last year.
Any questions? Just take a vote?
Yeah, it was motioned and seconded at the previous meeting, so we simply need to vote for it.
Okay. All in favor of adopting the ordinance which was introduced and seconded by council's previous meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 401. Item number eight is an authorization to an amendment to, how do you say that? Kirchel?
Chikarrel.
Chikarrel Lane Performance Agreement. Item number eight is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the 2016 Performance Agreement in which the parties are the City of Waynesboro, KM Hotels LLC, and the Waynesboro Economic Development Authority, changing the date of Section 2C by which the certificate of, by the, changing 2C by which the certificate of occupancy must be issued from January 2020 to January 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of council. As you just articulated, due to design delays in construction, due to delays in design and construction, the hotel owner has asked us to extend the beginning date of this rebate period by two years. As you know, this is, the performance agreement details the changing of Chikarrel Lane to a public road using a financing mechanism often called tax increment financing, where a developer or a lender might do the improvements, and the city would repay that developer or lender through increased taxes. That's the formula we're following here, the developer is bearing the burden of the cost of building that road while the city is helping him to design it. But again, due to delays, we just don't see that road happening and the hotel being built before January 2022.
Are there any questions?
Remind us where Chikarrel Lane is, or will be?
Off of Windy Grove, kind of behind Plazicatessa, Plazicatessa, Ateca, whatever that is, the Mexican restaurant over there.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to amend the agreement? Ms. Anderson, is there a second?
I can second that.
Dr. Haas, is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 401.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchens. Item number nine is appropriation ordinance for Basic City, Basic Park Improvement SOCA MOU. Item nine is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the general fund unassigned fund balance in the amount of $20,900 to transfer to the capital project fund in a matching contribution in the amount of $29,900 for engineering work related to the Basic Park SOCA soccer complex. Mr. McCormick, you're back up. Mr. Jones can stand by him if he wants.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So this ordinance will do two things, it'll appropriate the funds, and next year, we entered into an MOU with a soccer organization of Charlottesville a few years back, that we would split the engineering costs on this 50/50. So basically, this will appropriate the funds, and then they'll send us money as well for the other half of this. It'll appropriate the funds in next year, and it'll assign the funds during 2019.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Allen, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, is there any other discussion? The ordinance will be received for second consideration at our July 8th meeting. On to number 10. Number 10 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $68,000 in general fund unassigned balance to transfer to capital project fund for building improvements at Rosenwall. Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So much like the last ordinance that you guys entertained, this will assign the fund balance in this year, this was budgeted for during this year, due to some procurement issues, it didn't get spent this year, so we'll need to roll the funds forward to next year, and without procurement, we can't assign the fund balance without you all's permission. So this will make it so that the money can be spent next year. It's for the Rosenwall, the outside of the Rosenwall gym, for some scheduled maintenance on that.
Any questions for Mr. McCormick? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Haas, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, is there any other discussion? The ordinance will be received at the second consideration in our July 8th meeting. On to number 11. It's to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Council Division 3, Ordinance Resolution of the City Code of Waynesboro. Ms. Michael.
As the city council may recall, previously this year, we introduced some charter amendments which were passed by the General Assembly, one of them relating to ordinances and how ordinances are passed, and it has, like I said, it was passed by the General Assembly and it's effective July 1st. So to update our city code, we've introduced this ordinance to now match the updated and amended charter.
Okay, and this allows us to?
Ordinances will still be required to be considered at two meetings unless they're relating to appropriation, the city receiving funds, so that way the city can accept, you know, grants, federal funding, state funding, things of that nature, and not have to wait a month to receive those funds.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Haas, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Allen, any other discussion? The introducing, the ordinance having been introduced will be considered at our July meeting. Communications and Correspondents.
I don't have anything this evening.
Citizen Comment Period.
Marcia Geiger, 701 Locust Avenue, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the wonderful meeting that we had last Wednesday night for the presentation of Phase 3 of the Greenway. I would like to state that for those who were not able to attend the meeting, they can visit Parks and Recreation's website and see all five groups that have been proposed, and also the comment sheet that they can complete and return by July the 8th. Thank you again.
Thank you, Marcia. All right, that concludes what we have on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Ms. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 401.
Well done, Ms.